The Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting will come to order. Let the record show that today is September the 18th, 2019. Time is nine o'clock a.m. Uh, Ms. Ruth, would you be the honor to lead this assembly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Good morning, welcome. Nice to be back down in the...
Where all the goodies are.
Wonderful. We can call up an area of Wetmore, yeah, where all the goodies are.
You know, they're all invited to come up to any of the ones in West Cliff and bring goodies.
Oh, if they bring goodies, yes. Yeah, as long as they bring goodies.
Hey, that was assault. You saw it.
Why don't we just meet here three times a month and meet up in West Cliff?
We'd get fat if we do this.
Well, that's okay. We'll need a bus.
And then clerk to the board, would you conduct the roll, please?
Commissioner Flowers.
Present.
Mr. Cannon.
Here.
Mr. Prince. Attorney Quinn Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board, Sally Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. Audience introductions.
John Spire, Wetmore.
Ruth Spire, Wetmore.
Reece Roper, Wetmore, Fire.
Hollard Green, Gray, Wetmore.
Elliot Jackson, West Cliff, Wetnout Tribune.
Jackie Hobbie, Pliny and Sunny.
Debbie Adams, Custer County Tourism.
Jackie Pukas, Sentinel.
Dave Tomzy, Wetmore, Fire, West Cliff.
Well, good morning, welcome all of you. Nice to have you here. Appreciate it. General, any amendments to the agenda?
Not for me.
I have not.
Nor do I. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve. Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin?
Uh, yeah.
If you're prepared or not?
I might say, um, I've been very busy since last meeting. It's been quite a while, so there's a lot of things that have gone on on the sixth. I attended the Justice Center meeting, had a great slideshow, suggested a layout of what we could do with the property that we own. Uh, we don't own, I'm sorry, we're leasing and they own some day down the road. The cost is rather high, but it was an excellent, excellent presentation. They took all of our information, they did a tremendous amount of work, came up with a plan that appeared to me to be just outstanding. I'm not going to be along with steel and everything. On the 10th, I attended the tourism board. Excellent meeting over there. They really got their ass together. I'm very proud of what you're doing.
You're not just saying that just...
No. Nobody would say that because we had a tourism...
No, no, seriously, I mean, if you listen to what's going on, coming to meetings, you're going to go, "Really? Did you tell us that?" I'm talking about one specifically, just a bit of the dark skies presentation. In that evening, I went to the Economic Development Committee meeting. On the 12th, I attended the Upper Arkansas Conservancy District meeting in Salida and tried to stay awake. It's very difficult to sit through for me, some people may love it. On the 16th, tourism and dark skies, I'm not sure who put this on, was it dark skies or tourism, the meeting that you had that night?
Me.
Okay.
Representing dark skies.
And the dark skies, I'm going to give you credit for both, put on an outstanding presentation and the slideshow about the upcoming 2020 Starfest that's going to occur June 18th, 1920.
June 19th, 2020.
That's close.
Yes.
I missed it by a day. It's going to be an event to behold. I suspect, maybe not the first year, but down the road, it will most likely rival the Bluegrass Festival in terms of people from all over the country coming to visit. A spectacular opportunity here, so I really commend dark skies, tourism, and you particularly, you've had to supplant it one night, you woke up and said, "Great." Check it out, you're on. Hold on. Let's see. Yesterday morning, we had coffee with commissioners. I talked about several of the items that we're dealing with. And then at two o'clock, I attended the CES meeting yesterday. I'm going to bring this up as during Commissioner Adams, my committee has met several times, I say my committee, the committee that I'm chairing for the ambulance service down here, met several times. We previously approved the persons who will be on the committee. Since then, a lady named Linda Washington has joined us. I think she'll be a very good addition, and I would just like to get approval from the both of you that you're okay with her being on the committee.
I think by consent, your idea, yes, sir.
Okay, great. We're meeting with the hospital district on the 30th. The committee has a recommendation that we're going to be bringing to the hospital district, which will hopefully get us through December 31st of 2020, so that we'll have ambulance service down here. Ultimately, my goal will be to see if we can work something out with this, but that's down the road.
Do we need to get together before that 30th meeting? Or talk about the right...
Here's the way I was thinking about it. I was thinking the board would have a discussion with the hospital district. If the proposal that the committee agreed with, they're going to have to go back to their board also. We'll just have the caveat, if the two boards can agree, excuse me, the two committees can agree, we'll go back to our boards. And then I would present it to this board, and you could say, "Yes, we agree," or "No, we don't," and go back to the drawing board. So it's conceptual right now, but we have some plans. I've met with multiple people within the county on how we can handle certain things. Kelly's looking into now what the cost would be if we did a special election just for the Wetmore folks who may choose to join the ambulance. Portion of it is the three mils we're talking about that is not being assessed down here, and that's fairly becoming an issue because the ambulance, you all know the issue, but... So my plan was, and then you can tell me if you want something different, my plan was for us to meet as the two committees, get together, see if we can come to some consensus for the interim, come back to the boards. They'll go to their board, I'll go to my board, and see, is that something we can all live with? And if it is, we'll move forward.
So I thought we agreed to have a joint committee with them.
That's what I'm saying.
So you're going to get together after each one kind of massages it and then come up with a joint committee recommendation?
I may not have been clear, Bill, but just the people from the county, my committee, have met multiple times to come up with a game plan.
Okay.
That we would like to present to the hospital on the 30th. And then that'll be the first joint meeting to try and resolve this particular issue, knowing that they will not have authority to say done deal, and I will not have authority to say done deal. We'll come back with, do the two committees think that this would work? And if it does, then we'll each go back to our respective boards to get approval if that'll work. So I have my marching orders from the committee. The committee has done an excellent job. I mean, these people really got their head on straight, and I think we have a plan that is good for everybody. So one of the major questions is invoicing for the ambulance service that comes down here in excess of what the ambulance is. And I've worked with, uh, what's up, financial guy? He does auditing and stuff.
Sam, Captain, Sam.
Sam, the audit, thank you. I've met with Sam the audit multiple times to talk about what legally we can do and legally we can't. We have kind of a game plan. So, you know, I don't really want to just do it all right now because, you know, there's no sense even discussing it until...
No, I agree, you don't have to go... Quit spilling your guts, then, it's okay.
So we're working through, if we come to an agreement between the two committees, we'll be going back to our board to say, "Is this something you can live with?"
Sure.
And if it is, it is. And ultimately, you know, my goal overall, no matter what, is if someone dials 911 on the eastern portion of our county, which includes Wetmore, of course, an ambulance crew jumps in, ambulance goes to save them. That is, I mean, that is the bottom line, it must occur, so anything else, we can work out. So that's where we are on that.
I have a question. Is this proposal for all of Custer County that's outside the boundaries of the hospital district, or just the Wetmore area?
What we're working on right now is all of the area east of the line that's not part of the hospital district.
So include San Isabel, where?
Include San Isabel and anybody else. Now, if you look at the hierarchy of calling for ambulances, some areas, for example, Ambitions Castle, Ryan's first called. But what the plan is that if, for example, Ryan's unavailable, our ambulance goes. So the plan is that, my plan is if someone dials 911, help is on its way. That's much to go. Sounds wonderful, let's get it done, and we'll move forward. I think we're going to have this thing resolved at the very first meeting. I think the proposal that our group would like to, when we get together as one group, the proposal will be reasonable and fair to everybody, and I think we're going to go, "Sounds great, let's move forward." The real issue is going to come down the road. Once we have established ambulance service through the election period, whether we do it in November of 2020, or 21 January, 21 start, or if Kelly tells us, when she's available to tell us, and I don't mean that in any negative way, Kelly's been wonderful, we may choose, and that's our decision, we may choose to say, "Well, let's go ahead and do a ballot, maybe a write-in ballot or something that's not too expensive, and get a resolution sooner than the November 2020 election." Worst case, it'll be 2020 election, and we'll get the decision from the folks on the, I don't want to say Wetmore, but in the eastern portion of the non-hospital district is where it is. And then the real question came up, and this is something that one of the committee members of my committee said, you know, if they vote no, does that mean an ambulance is not going to go from the coast? And that is a real issue, because the person who calls 911 may live up here and pay their three mil. It may be a visitor from somewhere driving on hardscrabble. So these are issues that could need to be resolved, and we're working on those. We've identified, I think, the majority of the issues. Move forward. So that's my committee report at the moment. Great. Commissioner Cannon?
Yeah, we have been busy, like you said, I haven't seen you or Jay. Actually, I ran into Jay once, so I've got a lot of things going on. Matter of fact, I did attend a broadband meeting at Silver Cliff Town Board meeting, and they voted to support the IGA, provided West Cliff eventually joins the band too. And then I talked to Paul Winkie about their meeting, and they're going to go through that, especially after today's meeting with Century Link, as soon as they understand what Century Link's doing, decide how to handle the broadband program. Which reminds me, there's a meeting, I think you both got an email from the consultant forum on the U.S. Department of Agriculture meeting on this whole piece, on how to help counties. Might be useful to go to that in Greeley, but they're looking for in Gunnison. They're looking to see if there's another one that might be closer to us, if we can go. So that's progressing along, and as you know, I'm the guy trying to schedule the meeting. We'll get the three of, because we, both towns and us together, as soon as this next meeting is over, and schedule time to talk about the ITAs.
So there's a Century Link meeting today?
What I understand, I heard it was at the town hall, West Cliff, at 1:30. We talked about it, I think, to follow this meeting.
Yeah, I had, I'd been down broadband meeting, that's all I'd written down. So it's Century Link?
1:30, it's, all, it's Paul Winkie's meeting. He wants to understand what Century Link can offer the town, and why, you know, the pros and cons of what that is, against the pros and cons of what we think of the broadband plan. So from what I understand, the C.D. consultant, Tom Rivera, is going to be at the meeting to help unravel the differences between the two today. The airport is progressing along, we've got a meeting on Thursday. Do you want to come and sprinkle, hey, and help, that would be good, on the erosion interview?
Yeah, I've got a meeting, call that a spring.
See? That's right, you mentioned it. And from a NOT6 point of view, I've asked the engineers to put together the bottom-line program on costs for David Watts, he asked for that. He's going to, he's going to hire Cipher, he wants to use them, donate things to us. And so we had to re-liquor all the costs for him.
To do?
Both the ramp expansion, which is the taxiway, and the ramp asphalt work to make it big enough for his airplane, and also the fuel system. So we'll see how that plays out. We've got time to finish it this year, if he wants to do it this year. So that's where we stand right now, have a meeting with David Watts this week. And from a, did Roger Squires get ahold of you, Tom? So you understand the meter thing that they're proposing to do to help figure out who, what fire department and the saddle club and the road and bridge thing? Sounds like a pretty good proposal.
Yeah, it's not going to work for the saddle club and the fair board, but...
He said that it would be a different meter or something, I don't know if it's working. Something that Doug Schultz had proposed. And then he's got a, he and Gary both are looking at overhauling the chip, shit seal machine. Did he talk to you about that? Sound like a pretty good idea compared to a new one or renting something. So we'll see what they come up with, two to 15 to 20 grand, something like that.
25.
Yeah. And Justice Center had a meeting with Armstrong after the meeting, because they couldn't make the presentation, and they were, did a good job, and you've got the hard drive on, so we can go through that together and take a look at how we're going to move forward with the hospital. He said they're standing by, helped him yesterday, today, both, to help us with whatever they, we need them to promote this and help build the, how we're going to do it in pieces or whatever. Which kind of gets us to when, when should we get together on that? You got an idea, Jay? To take a look at it? We're going to have to probably toss it around with them.
Right. I'm happy to share that, how, with you or really with anybody. The, I presented it yesterday morning at my coffee with the commissioners, and gave the, I believe, the first view of a conceptual drawing, and that's all it was, that we talked about, on how a layout could be effective, and how it could fit into the property that we're leasing and hoping to own in a few years down the road. The audience was extremely receptive. We talked about, because of the very high cost of the entire project, probably would be phased in two parts, and of course, the question immediately came up is, are we going to do the sheriff and detention first, or the courts first?
He felt he made Shannon mad by that.
To be determined. Do you mean T?
He said the courthouse is cheaper, so you probably ought to go with that.
We have the liability to the county with that detention facility we have right now.
And the liability to the county with the courthouse having all the inmates in our hallway is just as bad.
And this is why I left it with, we will discuss it and determine, and I said, of course, nothing will happen without input from the county.
Right.
And I made it very clear that ultimately, we're going to get as many grants and as much money as we can dig up, but ultimately, we're going to the citizens and saying, "Do you want this, or do you not?"
Yeah, we need to talk about that. Whether it's going to be a workshop or something.
So this is what I told the folks, that, you know, I'm holding no bones back. Ultimately, we have to go to the voters if we're going to do this. There's just no way around that. So I told them that we will do our absolute best to raise as much money as we can outside of going there, but ultimately, the county will have to decide, the citizens will decide, "Do you want it, or do you not?" So that's, that's kind of how I left it yesterday. I left it very nebulous, but I wanted to give them the overview that, that was given to us on the thumb drive, so that they could, and I pointed out the corridors and the movement of public areas, and so I thought it was very important for them to say, "Hey, wait a minute, these guys are really trying to solve this very poor problem that we have." I discussed the current courthouse with, you know, how many times it's been added on to, and how disjointed it is, and how in freezing snow and rain, if you want to go see human resources, you have to go outside, and if someone is handicapped or able, and they need the assessor, the assessor has to conduct business in the hallway because they have to come downstairs to them instead of going up. It's a very, we have a very poor situation at the moment, and maybe if we were a very rich county, this would be a really easy thing to fix, but unfortunately, we're not. We don't want to be. I mean, we could bring in lots of industry and raise a lot of taxes, but bring in a lot of taxes, but it's not what we are. So anyway, I didn't mean to get off, I didn't mean to get off on a tangent on that, I'll shut up.
Is this presentation going to be put on the website?
And that was the question that was asked me yesterday, and I said, "I do not know the answer."
You know, that's a good question. We need to talk about that.
I realize it might, it might be premature to do that, but...
It is.
But if you're showing it to some people, then everybody will have access to it.
We've got to come up with a plan here.
And I agree with that. I have no, no problem with putting the conceptual drawings on there. I think the financial portion of it, we probably would have kept off at this time till we figure out what it is we want to do.
Right now, it's a conception.
It's just a conception, and I've told everybody, this is, you know, the architect's first salvo, and here's how we communicate our needs. I did go ahead and show them how much work the architecture architects did before they came up with the plan, all the discussions they've had, you know? You haven't seen it, but they have these pages of requirements that were given to them by the, all their discussions with the different areas. They did a wonderful job, I think.
So the question remains?
So I don't, here's my position, it's just a thought, it's a concept. People, if we just throw the picture out there, they don't understand why we're doing it yet. They don't understand how crowded we are in the courthouse. They don't understand the dangers there, they don't understand yet. So that's all part of the big picture program, to set the stage, and then you put it out in front of everybody to think, because we're thinking about it, it's still going to be changed by then. So we have to be careful what we put out initially. So we've got to be careful.
So you were just lucky if you went to his breakfast, you got to see it.
Well, he didn't share, he didn't share that document.
No, we don't.
We just talked about it.
I haven't seen it.
You didn't, oh, you put it up on the wall?
I absolutely put it up on the wall, wiped it out, how you go from detention into the courthouses. But I made it very clear, this is just the architect's concept of a plan that could work for us if we chose to move forward with it. I made it very clear that that was the case. We have made no commitments whatsoever. I understand that, it's just, we want to do our best to get, we really do need it. There's no question in how much of it can we do, and what stage is we at.
We're convinced in the populace.
Got a lot of work to do.
We're convinced of that, it's a necessity, not a want, and, you know, it'll fly or it won't fly. We'll do the best we can. Go on. Yeah, I mean, they've presented it at public meeting, it's not a secret.
Yeah, it's not a secret, so.
And it's just a concept. It's a, what I did stress to the, to the people there, that we did make a real, live, long-term commitment, 11-year commitment, on the Hager property, that regardless of whether this plan flies, or flies down the road, that that is the right thing for this county.
We don't need to beat dead horse. So therefore, I think probably, since you did show it, I think the right thing to do is probably to put it on the website, and you probably ought to put it in the context. We've already publicly, they know we bought, we're leasing ground to build it, it's in the plan. We don't know when, we don't know how, but you've got to set the stage, and maybe somebody needs to put the bullets on there, don't just throw the drawing out there. We've got to figure out how to, how to put it out there, and what people just think about it. It is a concept, and it's going to change, I guess.
Okay, what else you got?
Okay, water. Had a great meeting yesterday in, with the Upper Ark. We had about 15 proposers, mostly proposers, I think they all, they were all opposing. Met with the Blue Line Committee for three hours, and the bottom line out of that was a great plan to modify the Blue Line to accommodate the water that Upper Ark owns in Conquistador, and make it available for Round Mountain, what, water to help the problem Silver Cliff has with a, with the water for the future, you know, with the taps they'd be, they have now. And that was proposed by Randy Rusk and Robert Miller, that came up with the concept to pipe the water across and into the Great Creek, so that Round Mountain can pick up in their wellfields, the water, improve the water quality as well. They've got a water quality issue at Round Mountain. So they're going to go mull that over, and today is the day they, and we talked about the referee bail and saying, "We're going to give it back to the courts to schedule," which they're going to talk about today. But that won't impact this ability to modify it, or to change the boundaries of the Blue Line, to make sure they're not injuring anybody, and to get a win-win out of it. So that's sort of a nutshell summary. As soon as I get the minutes from the meeting and the actual proposal, that the Blue Line guys are going to mull over legally and technically to see what's possible on that idea. So I thought it was good. It's the third meeting in the series, we're going to meet again in a couple of weeks, the sooner, they want to do it sooner than later. So we'll see, and I'll send out the notice like I did before to everybody, including all the opposers and the three of us, we're of course on that as well.
Who chaired that meeting?
Tim, new chairman. And they have a couple of new guys. Manny Cohen was the only one on the committee that wasn't there, he's got some issues that he's working. Greg Phelps is there, too. Not part of the committee, but the one that's been part of it. And that's all I have for now.
Okay. I'll just go through my calendar. September 4th, I attended the Custer County Search and Rescue Board of Directors meeting. We've got something on the agenda about that today, so we can talk about that later on. I also attended the Justice Center meeting with Riley Johnson Architect, when they rolled out their preliminary proposal, that's what we asked them to do, so that's what we've been talking about here this morning. I think we need to be reminded that there is a committee to make all these decisions. I don't think these are county commissioner decisions, I think we're, we're a little getting the cart before the horse. I think Sheriff Byerly's trying to get this committee put back together. They had talked about a date, I don't remember exactly what they decided on. He was waiting to get input from that committee, but I would think it's up to that committee to decide what to do, and what recommendations to make to us moving forward.
Or the process to get to that, if you're...
Certainly, you know, it's going to end up on our desk eventually, but I just think we need to honor that whole process, that there is a committee, and it's a little disappointing to the time committee wouldn't have that preliminary proposal meeting with Riley Johnson, but to me, I would think that committees, if they're going to function, they probably would come up with a plan to say, "We need to move forward with all of it, we need to do it in phases," or whatever, I don't know, I just...
And they should sponsor the workshops, or whatever it takes to get that.
So I certainly will attend those meetings, I just, you know, from the beginning, we were trying to stay kind of hands-off and let that committee function, so that's kind of where I'm at. I also had an interesting phone conversation with Don Wharton from Reach Air Ambulance. They want to make a proposal to us to consider subscribing for Reach Air Service for the entire county. entire county, basically an insurance policy that if we decided to do that, we would pay them an annual fee and everyone in the county would be covered for air ambulance.
Is it one ride or two or?
Unlimited. Their, their two big bullet points, well, three really were in that. Number one, it would cover anybody in the county, whether they were visiting, whether they lived here part-time, or whether they were full-time residents. And then the second thing was, and they talked about this at that hospital district board meeting, they would guarantee, a written guarantee that there would be absolutely no out-of-pocket money from anybody that was covered.
Policy expensive? Did he talk about?
No, it's not. The third, I guess, bullet point was that obviously, and they talk about in the brochure that they've been sending out through the papers to people in the county, that, that it is on an availability service. There's no guarantee of that, I don't want to say helicopter because it might be fixed wing, but if that air asset is being used somewhere else, then obviously, they can't service us. But, and then the triage would come through Reach. So the highest caregiver on that flight would determine whether or not the call dictated the need for an air ambulance, or it could be ground transportation or whatever. They did throw out a preliminary figure. He said, you know, you can, you can talk about the figure, but he said that's something that we would have to sit down with commissioners and negotiate, but they based it on roughly 4,200 people in the county, and they thought that that could be done for $20,000 a year, which averages $5 per person per year. So at some point, if we want to pursue that, I'm sure he'll come back from California and meet with us.
Flying out a slider.
Yeah.
You could dovetail on that, because I'm kind of pretty into some of this. I appreciate that conversation, because I think this would be a tremendous boon that the county could afford to every person in Custer County. I think the cost is nominal, considering our $7 million budget, and I would really like to see it as part of our proposed budget for 2020.
Something we had to talk about.
That we just budget for and see if we can work it out. What a wonderful asset to give to our citizens for a minimal amount of cost. This is my opinion, and I'm sticking to it.
Yeah, I have my opinion about the deal.
Why don't you tell us how you feel, Jay?
No, but I guess, like a lot of things, I'd like to find out what the citizens of the county feel about that. And I don't know how we do that. Certainly, I don't know how we do that before budget hearings on 13th of October, but the other thing that they, I asked him, I said, well, I know you've already got some subscribers to your program now, and they're estimating about 400 people in the county already subscribed to that. So I said, yeah, I'll get to you in just a second. So I said, so there'd be a little duplicity there? And he said, well, there would be, but the point is that if, if we entered into a contract to carry, to cover everybody in the county, the people that already are members, that includes a nationwide coverage that, that other people wouldn't have if they weren't already members. So we would only be paying a subscription for them to be covered in our county. If it happened in Pablo County, that's a whole nother ballgame. It's just within the borders of the county. Yes, sir, go ahead.
You aware that we have a meeting with those people on the 24th here at 6:00?
I am.
Okay.
Yes, yes. I'm going to be in a conference in Spokane, so I will not be in attendance to that, but yes. They informed us of that, so, and I'm sure they'll talk about that.
Yeah, 6:00.
I don't, I'm not privy to the context of that meeting. I'm making an assumption that it's to talk about air ambulance coverage down here. And so I would guess this whole countywide coverage would be part of that conversation. If we or whoever decided to purchase that insurance coverage for everybody in the county, then unless you're interested in that international, national and global coverage, I guess I would ask if I was at that meeting, well, if the county pays for a countywide membership, then I don't see the need for individuals down here to pay for that. I guess that would be my.
I just want to make sure you were aware they were having that meeting down here also.
Yeah, who did they reach out to? Did they talk to you guys? I mean, what's the purpose of that meeting? Is it to talk about air ambulance coverage or what more?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, personally, I think it's probably a good program, whether or not we can afford it, whether or not the citizens think we should be spending the money on that. I have no idea with that.
And Hayward was the one that set up the Reach coming here.
And then I quit.
Well, more and more, if you have a radio, you know that more and more, they are just dispatching air. They are just, dispatch is more often calling for air, for flight.
Right.
As a routine, I mean, based on, you know, based on certain protocols. I don't even know what the protocols are, but I'm hearing it all the time.
Near death or something.
And so that, that would probably be a good deal.
Yeah, I mean, personally, as a taxpaying citizen, I would think for $5 a year, pretty good insurance policy.
Yeah, I mean, I pay it for itself.
Yeah, so I asked Mr. Wharton if he had the figures for the frequency of air flights out of Custer County. He said he did. Last year, we had 40 air transports, so probably range anywhere between 5 and 25,000 bucks, depending on where they're going. And so we talked about the financial piece of that a little bit. Obviously, they believe they have a pretty good track record of collecting their revenues from the insurance companies that most private citizens don't have, and so that's where they would make up a lot of the ground on, on that. So $20,000 a year is going to cover one or two flights. And then after that, people would say, well, then they're going to lose money. No, they won't, because they will go after the insurance company.
Still collect on the insurance.
It's different from our ambulance, because when our ambulance makes a call, they still bill people for an ambulance service that air ambulance would not. It's a no-cost.
Right.
So what I hope is not, if this comes to fruition, I hope there's not abuse to say, don't send your ambulance, send a helicopter, because I don't have to pay the helicopter.
Yeah, and they wouldn't.
They won't die.
There's so many
My hip hurts.
Level of care protocols in place that it, it would have to be, and that's the thing, Air Reach reserves the right to make that determination whether or not they would send an ambulance, so. And then on the 12th September, I also attended the Upper Ark Water Conservation District meeting, and then we had a CES meeting yesterday at the Search and Rescue Building, which I thought was probably one of the more productive CES meetings that I've been to, so.
What did they do?
Well, obviously, a lot of the conversation was around the transition of the dispatch to FreeCom, and what impacts that's going to have and how it's going to.
Positive, everything?
Well, some positive, mostly positive, but certainly there's some things that keep coming to light that are going to be an issue, and one of those is Shannon Byerly is concerned about the administrative details that dispatch has been handling. FreeCom is not going to do that, so he doesn't believe he has the personnel, wants dispatch goes away to handle all that.
Like fire?
Yeah, the burn permits, burn notification, or, yeah, the permit notifications, that kind of stuff, so.
That'd be hard to handle differently.
There's going to be some pains with this, as there always is in transition, but I think overall, the meeting, they were very encouraged and sort of positive.
Yeah. Code Red, they don't run on Code Red at FreeCom. They're looking at going to Air Reach. They haven't made that decision yet, but, so we're probably going to have to make a decision about how we want to deal with our alert and warning system. I think they deal with IPod down there. I looked today, I don't know if you know that or not, but I know they do not deal with Code Red, so we, most likely, we're going to have to make a change there. So there was conversations about that. And I have the agenda here this morning, but kind of other just reports, what, what those other entities are doing and so on and so forth, so.
You guys still getting any flack on the tower?
On the tower?
911.
Haven't heard a word.
Haven't. Several people still.
I've heard multiple comments. Most of them are not whining about the aesthetic side of the tower. Most of them are, is my cell service.
Yeah, and that's a hard one, the field.
And I, I just explained to them that this is really designed for E911 emergency. However, we understand there's at least four opportunities for cellular companies to put stuff up there, and certainly would make sense to do that. So I suspect, is the way I would say it, that your cell phone service will probably improve as a result of that, but that's not what it's really designed for, designed when you dial 911. Help.
Yeah, I said, I haven't heard a word from these two ladies, because I had a one-on-one with a very animated, unhappy, anti... And I asked her if she was anti-government. She told me she was, but she said, I'm certainly anti the way government's working. I said, well, I would imagine most people have issues with how different levels of government work, but she certainly was concerned about, we're going to kill all the kids in Custer County and kill the insects and the deer. We've interrupted the deer migration, and I told her early on, I said, I'm assuming this meeting, this one-on-one, is going to be discussed, the AT&amp;T tower. Well, Kara was the admin assistant sitting in there. She, of course, couldn't help but hear some of that, and we had a hard time staying on track about the AT&amp;T tower. It was about microwave poisoning of the planet, and so it was very exasperating, and I probably responded less favorably than I should have, but first time she called me a buffoon on the phone and told me I was full of poppycock, and I asked her what poppycock was. She said, that's bullshit. A very astute lady, got that whole thing, but it didn't, it degraded from there, actually, but other than that, I haven't.
That was the high point?
That was the high point. Yeah. So she finally got up in a huff, because she thought I was very ignorant, uneducated, unwilling to research, and.
Tell her we'll make it look like a tree and that.
So I asked her at one point in this tirade about, I find it interesting that you brought your cell phone in here, and that's how I contacted you, was through a cell phone. And she promptly informed me that that was going to go away, that that cell phone was a...
I can put it up to her head anymore. Good.
Yeah, truly, we're kind of making fun of this, but really and truly, if a citizen has a complaint like that, we really do take those things seriously.
Well.
We may feel differently than they do.
Yeah, no, sorry.
But you have a right to complain about anything you want.
Got to take exception. I'm not going to get, take anything serious about killing all the insects on the planet and disrupting the deer migration and we're killing the deer herd. I said, we've got more stinking deer in Custer County than we can deal with.
You did not chase her away. You allowed her to speak.
I sat there and listened.
And that's my point.
Even after she called you?
Oh, yeah.
Pay attention.
I don't even know what a buffoon is, but it doesn't matter.
Well, it doesn't sound like this.
I don't know what it was.
So I have a question. Do you guys remember about when the AT&amp;T, it wasn't, it was up, up Mount, the AT&amp;T guy came in and talked to us, and it seems like he said that it would improve customers' service, but I cannot find the article. Can't find when it was.
I always understood it was just emergency services and all.
I, I kind of know what you said, but what I don't remember him saying that it's really not designed for that, but it would improve cell service if we put the equipment on the tower.
See, the grant itself is a federal grant to put it in all the world, and to make it commercial, this is probably out of bounds, so I don't know.
I can't find it.
Yeah, I didn't, I haven't talked to AT&amp;T since they've got this tower put up. Obviously, some of that radio equipment up there is for cellular service besides FirstNet. I mean, I'm sure they could handle just FirstNet with a 24-inch parabolic dish. They've got millions of dollars worth of equipment there, so. And the lease agreement that we entered into specified that they reserve the top 20 feet of that tower and that any other cellular provider had the right in good faith to negotiate to lease space from that tower as well. It's not exclusively for AT&amp;T. Doesn't mean AT&amp;T has to lease it, but at least they have to negotiate with any other cell phone company that wants to, cell phone provider. So other than that, to answer your question, I, just casual conversational comments, you know, I think everybody in the county, including me, was amazed at what 150 vertical feet look like versus 150 feet of horizontal. I get 150 feet on the ground, but when you stick it up in the air, I wasn't sure about that, and so somebody asked me, well, wait a minute, what about the 35-foot height restriction? And I tried to call you yesterday, because I wanted to get clarification, Jackie, but the two municipalities, that doesn't apply, but the language, I didn't look it up. So the 35-foot height restriction in the unincorporated parts of the county.
30 foot.
30 foot is for.
Everything.
Everything. Telephone pole.
So if that tower was in the county, they would have to go before the planning commission and get an overhype and stuff, because we have a thing on towers and stuff, and then that battery box on the bottom. If it's over 100 feet, they would need a permit for that, plus they would have to approve easements across other people's property.
So this question was asked of me, and I couldn't really answer it. Sangard Crystal Electric has traded property from the county near the landfill.
Correct.
They'll have to get a variance on a substation if it's.
They already did. They already got an S U P, and then they had, if you get an S U P approval, then you have two years to act on it. So they had to get, they put the fence up and started with the poles. So they're working towards, so that's where that substation will be.
So if there, anybody, doesn't have to be Sangard Crystal Electric, but if anybody was going to put an extension of overhead power lines, they would, that are over 30 feet tall, they're going to have to get a variance.
Correct.
Yeah, they, I couldn't.
Like the substation down on Oak Creek.
Yeah, Oak Creek.
Of, grade on, what's that?
Was that Black Hills?
Yeah, Black Hills. We went through three or four meetings, because also, I'm going to remember that they have a piece in their documentation that states they can take eminent domain, a power company can, but they've never done it. But we had to, a lot of the concerned citizens for that substation. We just had to have a lot of public meetings.
Yeah, so it doesn't, it's not for a, this is where the conversation started, was, was it for a building? Was it for a residence? Was it for a structure? And that's what I was going to call you to ask you the definition.
There's a section for towers.
Okay. All right, very good. So that's kind of what I've been up to. I want to remind you, gentlemen, today. I wanna remind you, gentlemen, today they're having a family's first act training at noon in the courtroom, given the fact that we're just on commissioner items, I don't know the.
I'm waiting with bated breath for Clint.
So.
I'll keep by them for 20 minutes.
Yeah. Well, that's basically what I have, gentlemen. Anything else on commissioner reports? Okay.
The wet work, Laura.
Yeah, it is.
You could have one thing on the agenda.
We'd waste three hours.
Well.
Uh, touring items?
I was at the Justice Center meeting last week. The next meeting is actually scheduled for this Friday at 10:00 a.m. Sorry about that. And as far as I can tell, it's pretty much gonna be a repeat of what we already said through last week. I think what Shannon is trying to do is get more of the committee members there to, because there wasn't a good representation from all those committee members, but I don't plan on going again, because then it'll be pretty much a repetition of what we already heard.
Is Riley Johnson coming back?
I, no, I don't think so. Shannon's just gonna try to present it off.
I didn't remember what they had finally settled on. I'm out of town tomorrow, and I'm like you, I'd probably be going anywhere. Well, I'd go, just.
But it's Friday, Friday.
Uh, or Friday, sorry, at 10, you said?
At 10, right. In the commissioner's room, I think, isn't that?
Yes, and I told Shannon I wasn't gonna be there.
All right. The only other thing that I've really done, Sheriff Byerly sent out an email inquiring about the mill levy for, that's primarily for dispatch, and apparently he's gonna go with FreeCom. The, I think he said, right now the mill levy generates about $200,000 a year, most of which is for dispatch, and he doesn't believe there's gonna be that much, or the need for that much money, and he was wondering what we should do about the mill levy. I started looking into it, and then Donna told me that she had inquired of Sam Donardo, and I thought, well, he knows, he's gonna know about that a lot more than I do, so I thought I'd wait to hear from Sam. He hasn't gotten back to her yet, so I told her I'd contact Sam and talk to him about it, and see what he thinks we should do on that. And the only other thing, the air ambulance service issue you were talking about a little while ago, I think about three years ago, there was a proposal from a different company, I forget the name of it, for air ambulance service. It was discussed, and we commissioners met with the representatives, and ultimately decided against it, and I don't recall what the reasons were at that time, but if it's something that you wanna look back at, if you're gonna pursue this, Kelly's been probably assigned the minutes of those meetings and see what was discussed and why. Jay, were you on the board?
Yeah, same company, different name.
Is it? Okay, yes.
And what was the name of that company?
But it was, it was five times as much money, if I remember, it was very, very expensive at the time.
I don't remember the cost, but was it the money issue, or was it something else?
I think it was money.
And I don't remember.
What I remember, but I, you know, I earned my gray hair, I don't.
I just threw that out there, in case you weren't aware of that. That's all I have for today.
Great, thank you.
Dang it, I hate that one again.
Admin assistant, anything, Ms. Kara?
I don't know.
I think you probably did introduce yourself when you were passing out the agendas, but I do wanna formally introduce Kara Evans, our new administrative assistant. Very glad to have her on board, and she's doing a great job, still figuring out a few things, but I think she's doing a great job. We're excited to have her, so.
Actually, she's pretty surly and has a bad attitude.
I'll work on it.
So far, I've only seen that when she was dealing with the county attorney.
Only with a lawyer. With a lawyer, I don't blame her.
Nice to have you.
I'll second that.
Public comment, anything, folks, you wanna talk about that's not on the agenda? I guess we could just real quick, talk about the AC deal, huh?
Yes, it's fixed, yay!
Jay said he's earned his gray hair. I feel like I've.
Jeez.
Made a down payment on the forehead of gray hair over this deal, but it's working now.
Right now it is, yes, sir. I don't know about the heat yet, we'll find that out.
Right. Yeah, and I, I haven't seen his invoice, so I don't know exactly what he did, but the last time I talked to Michael Thiem, who's been coming down doing the work, we're probably gonna have to have a, a switchable disconnect put on those units. He may have replaced one.
He did replace one.
Because it was burned out.
It was, it was fried.
And I spoke with him briefly yesterday at CES meeting, apparently you were here.
Oh, yeah. I wanted to make sure I was here, because he swore I was fixed before, and it was not, so I didn't leave until it was fixed.
Yes, sir.
I meant to bring up, I just forgot.
Yeah, and I've got another issue we probably ought to talk about as well. So right now, we're back up and running, and say, I'll, I'll look at the.
We still have to have some sort of service done on.
Correct.
Some continued service.
Yeah, we need to get a service contract in place, probably, for that, so.
Do we have one in West?
Uh, no. I have every confidence that you're gonna stay on me about that until that happens, too. No doubt in my mind.
Yes, sir. Especially when the heat comes out, if it don't work, you're good, here we go.
Go ahead, sir.
I sure hate to bring this up, but I got a call, and they told me I spoke to you also from Mario, I don't remember.
Arno.
Right, Arno.
Arno.
Arno, yeah, thank you. And I don't know. We have put out air conditioner bids for the courthouse, air conditioning units that were not working right, and we awarded a bid based on sealed bids that were given to us. He called after the fact, after the award was given, saying that the person who was awarded it did not follow the requirements of the bid, and had he, if he was able to do the same thing, he would have been much more competitive, now whether we would have chosen or not to use another one. I told him I'd look into it, and I'm very concerned about that. I mean, if that is in fact correct, then I have no reason to believe it's not. This is something I think that needs to get discussed, and we need to appropriately handle it, so I just wanna bring that on the table. I'm concerned about this.
How do you know he didn't follow the requirements?
Apparently, now, I don't have the details out specifically, but apparently, the bid called for a specific maker of the unit, and the bid we got was for a different unit being put up there, and the cost of the unit that was bid, according to the specs for the bid, was more expensive than the ones that were bid to us, is the way I understood it, but believe me, I could be wrong on that. If I am, I'm happy to be corrected.
Yeah, that was the other issue that I meant to bring up, I forgot, so you're right on track. Yeah, I, I wrote the bid proposal for that, all of this comes back on my inability to have written a complete bid spec scope of work order. I thought we had the basis covered. I'll tell you from my perspective, what I think happened was, one of the contractors contacted me and said, "I know your scope of work calls for a Trane brand air conditioner." He said, "I can tell you that is not available from Trane. What you're after and what needs to go on the top of the courthouse is not available." So I substituted, I forget the brand name now, I've got it in my notes, another brand of air conditioner, commercial air conditioner, one was four and a half ton, and one was five and a half ton, and I found all this out, well, he told me that the Trane wasn't available, that he was gonna substitute with a comparable model, and then Mario also called me and said he was a little displeased that we did not have identical bids. I don't know that we ever have identical bids on things like that, but that's neither here nor there. And he was a little upset that we awarded to a contractor that didn't live in the county, and that he indicated that if, if he had known that, he could have certainly priced a cheaper unit and would have been a little more competitive. Those bids, I think there was $3,000 difference between the two bids, so I told him I would have a conversation with the commissioners about that. I also talked to the contractor that we awarded the bid to, he's already ordered the units, so the process is already in the works, and I told Mario, if in fact he has already placed his orders, I'll take the fall for this deal for not doing a better job on writing the scope of work, but I said, "If he's already ordered it, we awarded him the bid, he's acting in good faith, I think we're gonna have to live with that." He said, "Well, I understand that, I just want you to know I'm not very happy about it," and I said, "I appreciate that." Mario lives in the valley, of course, we know him, he works full-time, we asked him numerous times to come deal with the rooftop units whenever we're having trouble with them, not that this has anything to do with the bid process, but I, I say this in response to his comment about the other contractor doesn't even live in the county. We tried to get Mario to come work on our stuff, and he just can't, because he has a full-time job, he works at the prison in Florence, and I mentioned that, and of course, we didn't, we didn't have an elongated conversation about that, I just, I don't know. So it, I told him I would take full responsibility for not writing a very good scope of work, and then probably not being a little more observant when the bids were not exactly comparable. I think they were comparable bids as far as the equipment, I don't have any question about that, but I do know that the contract we awarded included some stuff that wasn't even in Mario's bid, so I don't know.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
Michael Thiem does have property in the county, and he is in the process of building in the county, so I don't know if the complaint was that he wasn't Johnny on the spot, because he didn't live in the county, but he is a property owner in Custer County.
That's good information, I didn't know that. He just physically said he doesn't even live in the county, and I said, "I'm aware of that, I did not really own property in the county." Thank you. Yes, sir.
My only concern, I, you know, we, we always try to have the right person in the county, if at all possible, shop locals, you know, something we really believe in, but we also have our taxpayer money that we need to worry about, so we go with the lower bid, unless it somehow we really feels not appropriate. My concern was that they really did not bid apples to apples, and that was my concern, I thought his legitimate, what he said, "I appreciate him, I think it's a true gentleman who says, 'I'm, doesn't stand if I'm gonna sue you, I'm gonna make a big stink,'" he says, "Okay." So I think what we'll just say is we learned a good lesson here, okay, for the future, I mean, I don't know what else to say.
Well, yeah, I mean, this would sound like excuses. I do think those bids were apple to apple, they just weren't brand name to brand name. I'm comfortable that, that, that those units were comparable.
In price?
Uh.
Because that's what he said to me. The, if I would have bid a Lennox instead of a Trane, I could have well underbid, because Lennox is much less expensive than Trane.
Right, right.
And I said, "I understand that," he says, "I bid it based on the specification of the type of unit."
No, on the brand name.
The brand name, the brand name, I take it back, you're correct, the brand name. Being a more expensive unit, his bid would have been higher. Now, unknown to me was that the unit was not even available, but the bottom line is, they weren't bidding apples and apples, I don't think, but, okay.
Yeah, when you look at the specs on the units that they bid, they were comparable. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
The brand names were different.
You can buy two cars, a Cadillac and a Vespa, but you know, one's gonna be a lot more than a Bugatti somewhere.
Uh, well, but if you spec out a Ford and a Chevrolet pickup that are comparable, right, they're two different brand names, and that's what I told him, I said, "I believe that these two AC unit bids were comparable pieces of equipment, just had different brand names."
Are they both five and four ton?
Five, five and a half, four and a half ton.
That makes a difference. You can't argue that. It's okay.
It has legitimate.
Well, I, I do too, and I owned up to that. I said, "You have a legitimate complaint, and we, we didn't stick to the bid process of requiring both those units to be trained." If I had to do it again, I'd say a Trane or a comparable unit.
That would have solved it.
I believe they're comparable. I'm certainly aware they're not the same brand name. He doesn't know what the price was. He asked me that, I said, "I'm not gonna give you that information until we get this sorted out." So he believes that he got outbid because the other contractor bid a cheaper unit.
Correct.
I don't know that. Maybe he has a better opportunity, or a better ability to buy those units at a cheap, I don't know, but I just told Mario, I said, "Well, I don't think that's an accurate statement, because unless you've talked to the other contractor, I don't think you know what he paid for them," so, I don't know. I told Mario, "Well, I'll own it, it was my mistake, and my short-sightedness caused the issue at the beginning," but, and I, like you, Mr. Prince, I felt I respected him for saying, you know, "I just, I just needed to call and tell you what I thought about it."
And I agree.
He said, "Whatever happens, happens." Okay. Um, well, we had some nice public comment, although none of you were a part of it, so.
It was fun.
I was here.
Does your fun meet or pay?
Uh, have any guests, ma'am?
So, the lady that's in charge of Valley Assisted Living.
Yes.
Was in there the other day wanting to get a handicap placard for their van that they use. The van, this is the van that, I think I was talking to you about, Tom, several months ago, that I discovered is still under the county name, it was an airport van when, and you might remember this, Jay, because it happened when you and Bob and, actually, maybe it was before you, anyway, Bob arranged it, Katni, when he was commissioner, for them, for them to have the van to use. I thought that he had given them the van, so I did some digging, and it was a lease, the county leased it to them in 2014. Clint, you wrote the lease up, and then they were supposed to redo the lease in January of 15, that's when it was, and it never got redone, so there's never been another lease then, or anything like that.
Did they make payments?
No, it wasn't that kind of lease, they were just letting, you just, here's this van, you can use it, because they needed to use it. They cannot get a handicap permit without their name being on that van, so I, I just wanna bring this to you guys, so that you can either do another lease with them, you can.
Title.
Do whatever. Give it to them, do whatever.
Yeah, I remember a conversation that we had about that, kinda got shuffled to the bottom of the deck. I think the cleanest, easiest thing to do, as Commissioner Candace suggested, we just donate that van to them and let them clean the title up with you, and, no, I don't see any reason, in my opinion as a commissioner, why we would need to continue to own the van that's been five years, and.
It's not on the agenda, but I'll move that way, donate the van to.
I'll say.
Valleys. Terry? Decide whether he's gonna let that happen or not.
I was going to instruct our administrative assistant to put it on the next agenda, but given the circumstances, I'll allow the motion. It's been moved and seconded to donate the, I don't have any of the specs, I don't even know what brand it is.
I know, and I meant to bring, I meant to get it on the agenda and bring it to your mind.
It's okay, I didn't know that.
So, that we donate the van that the county has leased in the past to Valley Assisted Living. Further discussion?
Paying insurance.
Public comment?
Who's paying insurance on it all this time?
I assume they are.
Yeah, that was part of the lease, is that they had.
That's a pain, we still would hold some liability, because with the honor of it, so.
True. Yeah. Further public comment, hearing them proceed to vote, I'm in favor of donating the van to the former courtesy, airport courtesy van to Valleys Assisted Living. Say aye.
Let me think of it.
Let me think of it. Aye.
Okay.
Let's debate it some more.
Bill, will you contact Valley, or you don't need to do that?
No, I can, because I told her I would find out about it.
Okay.
Mary.
All right. We'll move on unfinished business, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Nor do I. Commissioner Canada?
No.
New business? We'll allow public comment on any action items. First time against consideration of waiving Custer County governmental agency fees. What's good pleasure?
Well, is it likely to give you my opinion?
I would. You asked to have it on the agenda.
I move we waive the fee. Let's make it a motion, and let's debate it, and let's get it over. I second it. Let's talk about what the motion actually is, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, and this, but I moved it the way it was written, what it is about donating. I get it. I'm gonna ask you to clean up the motion if it comes to a vote.
Well, we're gonna clean up the motion before that.
Yeah, that's the right thing to do. Because, right, and the motion was, from what I understand, it's waiving the fee. This is what Jackie had brought in before, right? It's more than that.
Yes. The agenda says consideration of waiving Custer County governmental agency fees.
So, that's generic, so we're gonna make this a broader. That's what we're trying to do. That's when I put it on the agenda, that was my plan, when you put this on the table, let's discuss, and let's come up with a consensus, one way or another, just so we don't have this every time. Okay, so let's make it generic.
So, your motion was to waive the fee, and you seconded it, correct?
The fees, we'll make it, we'll clean it up. Yes, but I also want to talk about policy.
Okay. I'm gonna rule the motion out of order because I'm not sure what the fee was. I'm not trying to be on the minute.
I'm trying to clean up the motion.
So...
What I wanna avoid, Tom, we get in a hat. We're in a hat. We debate a lot about what we think, and then we put our positions out, then we make a motion, then we re-debate. So, if we're gonna do Robert's rules, let's do it.
Okay, then you're gonna have to make a very specific motion.
That's right. So, I will move, I'll restate it, that we, I'm gonna try to say it the way Jay had described it. I wanna make a motion to waive Custer County governmental agency fees, and that's too broad, I think.
Well, you're making the motion, so...
I know. I would narrow it down, because what fees are we talking about? Dump fees? Who are we waiving them to? That's right. Let's start there.
That's why I think in this situation, maybe some discussion prior to would be appropriate.
All right, then let's let the guy that put it on the agenda describe what he put on the agenda. Okay. This all started, I'm gonna do just two minutes of background, I'm not gonna ramble. This all started when Wetmore Fire Department asked to waive some fees.
Not true. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt, but we need to be accurate.
I defer.
Jackie Hobby asked us.
Who did I say? You said the fire department asked, but through Jackie.
No, that's not correct either, but I'm just saying, I just think we need to be accurate.
Why don't you tell us?
No, it's just Jackie asked us. We were all there.
Jackie asked us.
Okay, now don't be happy with the fire department.
That was behalf of the fire department, it was behalf of me.
Jackie said in the past that county has waived fees with different governmental agencies that Wetmore Fire Department would like to build a substation out somewhere near the Labor, and we would like to waive. She was suggesting that county waive the permitting fees because it was another governmental agency. Specifically, it's permit, building permit fees we're talking about. All right. So, that's kind of a historical. Then the question came up, and maybe I brought it up, I don't remember, well, is this A, appropriate, or is it not appropriate? And B, if it is appropriate, should we talk about the nonprofits in the county also? Since they are nonprofits, a nonprofit by definition should be doing something beneficial for the county, not for them personally or their personal pocketbook. So, should this be a broader question, is the way I rephrased it. So, that's kind of where I said, before we make any specific decision on one entity, the fire, the, oh, the fire department, maybe we ought to just put a policy out that this Board of County Commissioners feels X, Y, or Z, how we wanna handle permitting fees in the county for governmental agencies and nonprofits. That's how it gone on here. Okay, so let me comment on that since we're doing that now. Where do you draw the line? I know for a fact that the fire department has issues with a tire. The Broden Bridge boys will help them with a tire in a pinch, or vice versa. There are things that we do as a team in the county with different agencies. The Sheriff's Department has a van to donate to the airport, and we work the fees, you know. Where do you finally draw the line? So, I think case by case, Jackie did the right thing. She came to us because she has not got the authority to waive the building permit. Appreciate that. And so, I, you know, you gotta make, if we're gonna have a policy, it'd have to be broad enough so that people in a pinch don't say, "Well, I'm not gonna help the ambulance out because I'd have to go through a policy." Whatever. You see what I'm saying? Let's do Robert's rules, okay? I move. I move that we waive permitting fees to Custer County intergovernmental agencies in regards, whether a taxing district or not, any governmental agency, and any 501(c)(3) in the county that benefits the county. Now, I understand the question. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Moving to second it to waive permitting fees for intergovernmental agencies within Custer County and include 501(c)(3) organizations.
Can I rephrase it? I'd like to, I prefer to say nonprofits, because not every nonprofit's a 501(c)(3).
That'd be one of my comments. So, the motion would be to waive permitting fees for intergovernmental agencies, including nonprofit organizations within the county.
That benefits the county, yes. So, what are those?
Discussion.
So, what are those nonprofits?
Seventy-eight of them?
Are they like Beckwith Ranch wants to put in them in barns? Right. Beckwith Ranch chose to build another building. Or a church wants to build a building? Let me finish the answer. I mean, really. Go ahead. So, if Beckwith Ranch came in and said, "We'd like to add a building onto our property," and they go through the entire process, they get approval of the plans, and whatever else we need to do, but it comes down to the permitting fee, we would waive that fee from the county. That's how you asked specifically, what about Beckwith? But your motion has, that would benefit it, so are we gonna have to analyze each one? How do you? There lies, I recognize as I said it, there lies the problem. How do you determine what's benefiting the county and what's not? I get it. So, a church asks, you know, when do you draw the line?
Can I make a comment? I wanted to make a comment first about what fees I have come to the commissioners prior to this, that's to be waived. Every fire station in Custer County, I brought the files, the fee has been waived. I also have came in once a year for the swimming pool because Barbara Sutton was running a race. In our race, it states that she has to have a special event permit if she runs that race in the county. Anything that you do in the unincorporated part of the county, we have what you call a special event permit. I asked if they would waive the fee to the club because this is an event that the children run the race, and they have three times waived that fee. I've also asked in prior that the ATV club in Custer County, twice their fee has been waived. So, what I'm saying is, if you have to do something in the county, you have to obtain a special event permit at least 30 days prior to the event taking place. So, when you start using county roads or, and like with, let's just use Barbara Sutton's, when she run that athletic club up in Silver Club. She went down the highway, she went into the Forest Service on the trails. So, Barbara did all the paperwork. She made sure that she had all the permits from the Forest Service, that the State Patrol had no problem, and we waived the fee. It did not take any of my time or anything. So, I would, my suggestion is that we do it like we've always done it on a case by case basis. Then you just don't do a blanket, you're all waived. Because I think that if it involves a special event permit that we have in Arizona in ranks, that these nonprofits have to have, and they're willing to do the extra mile, and it doesn't take me or my time, then that would be a decision to waive the fee. But if I have to sit there and do letters that cost the county postage, and I have to contact the State Patrol and say, "Hey, we're having to run down the highway," then you've used taxpayer money to accomplish a fee waived. So, prior to this, we did it on a case by case basis.
We've also waived municipality fees for tires at the dump. Was my motion for building permits or just?
He says permitting fees.
Permitting fees. So, and I was thinking of permits to build is what my...
We don't really have building permits, we have zoning permits for building. Yes, or no?
Go ahead, just make a simple comment. The reason I'm here is because we had no record of ever having paid a permit fee before, and over the, we have now, what, five satellite stations, including me. We're about to embark, as you know, on the Dewey Station, hopefully soon the Hillside Station, and probably in addition, very soon Rosetta. So, we need to know where we stand on this so we can budget appropriately. It's about 10% of our project costs at Dewey's, not the end of the world. But maybe here's a solution to this, maybe just limit it to taxing districts because we thought of it as being money shuffled from our taxpayers. It was kind of like our taxpayers' money just being shuffled back and forth. Maybe it was unnecessary. That was our biggest concern, I think. Like I said, it's not the end of the world. We can adjust our budget and everything, but we are about to embark on a moderate building program based on our, the income we receive from this mill, right? That was our whole goal, to improve our ASO service and develop a better parity. Maybe it shouldn't include, it's a great idea, but maybe it can include nonprofits, because what if one of the nonprofits is just, and this is just an idea, and I don't even know if one exists, maybe a dog kennel that has to buy a building permit to put in a, and go through the process of putting a kennel into 30 dogs, could be an expensive permit, but it doesn't involve taxpayer or this money. Maybe it should be just relegated to districts that involve shuffling taxpayer money back and forth. Does that make sense? Because the first thing we thought was, geez, we're gonna pay you, but that's our taxpayers'. You know, it's just kind of shuffling of money. Does that make sense? Or maybe that's not a fair...
The argument I used last time.
Okay, well, that's kind of our feeling. It might be a slippery slope with the nonprofits. Like you said, they're 78, and yet, maybe it should be owned. I don't know. Maybe you're expanding on this. It's beyond building permits at this point, apparently, it sounds like, right? We're just concerned about the building permit. And again, it's not, it's sort of your decision, but that was our thought, just the shuffling of monies, maybe you could only taxing districts. Just thoughts.
Yeah, Commissioner Canada brought that up at our last commission meeting. I didn't happen to feel the same way. I think, I think there is a clear delineation between county coffers and special tax district coffers. These folks pay county taxes, they don't pay fire district taxes. If everybody in the county paid, I guess that would have a little different slant on it for me. I think the taxpayers in your fire district pay your taxes so that you function like you need, and they think you need to function. I just, I'm not in favor of crossing these lines with special tax districts. I'm not in favor of the motion, I'll just say that right now, but I don't wanna say argued. I brought up the point at the last meeting that I just didn't think that was appropriate. My thoughts on that haven't changed any. I did say, and I'll say it today because you're here, and I think you deserve to hear all of it, if you guys, as a special tax district, couldn't afford it, I would certainly consider that. My question would be, if you can't afford the zoning permit, how can you afford to do the project? I would ask that to anybody, not just the fire department. But if for some reason they were strapped, or they expected the money to come in later or whatever, I mean, all kinds of circumstances, I don't believe that's the case. I understand, and I've spoken to a board member who called me and said, "You need to understand, we did not ask the commissioners to do this." That's why I was very adamant, Commissioner Prince, about the wording being correct because the fire department did not ask that. I'm not throwing Jackie under the bus, I'm just trying to make sure everybody understands exactly how this came about. So, I've had somebody come to me and say, "Now, why in the world did you guys raise your planning and zoning fees if you're not gonna charge them?" See, we get that side. We just had a, I don't remember the exact percentage of the increase in the zoning fees this early summer. Go ahead.
Let's go back to the Wetmore Fire Station down here. Their fee was waived. So, you can't use that as snobbery, because you just got through saying that these people don't pay for their taxes up there.
Right.
Okay, so the Wetmore Fire Station, the Rosetta one, the first one out at Lake Dewey's, Conquistador Fire, when we had the ski area, they had to have their own fire station up there. That fee was waived. And I know that you hate it when I say, "Well, before we haven't waived fees." But I also have asked around, and when our county went to the town of Westcliff, Shannon Barley had to fill out a permit. He did not pay for a permit. So, it's almost like a give and take. In my perspective, it's almost like, I'll help you, you help me. This is a county facility, it's a fire department, and you represent all the county people. Yes, they're not paying for it. Okay, so it's $1,000 plus a $50 fee to do the lot line adjustment. I guess I, they never asked. I was going by history of what fees we've waived before. Never had this issue before. So, I'm sure there's other departments that waive their fees to other, to the town of Westcliff, to the town of Silver Club, and probably never even tell you. So, I guess I'm just confused at this huge issue. Could I see your point?
Yeah, I, I think, from my perspective, it's either, in this case, it's either within the hospital district or it's not. I mean, sorry, I've been on this hospital district for months. Within the fire district or not. To me, Wetmore Fire is not a comparable example because they're part of the county.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, to me, that goes off the table. If, if the county wants to waive the county's fee to the county, that's a whole nother ballgame. That would be a whole nother conversation with me, at least. This is not county waiving a county fee to the county. This is, you're asking the county to waive a taxing district's fee. Totally different than if it was a county entity, from where I sit. Go ahead.
Let me speak to the motion, too, so we can move on. I'm against the motion as it stands because I happen to agree, if you were open up too big a can of worms here, and so I'll vote against it. But I agree that if... And so I'll vote against it. But I agree that it ought to be waived. I think it ought to be on a case by case basis. And I disagree with your logic or thought. I hear what you said. But the point she makes about it being, we work together, is the same logic that I use. I'd rather see that $1,000 stay with the fire department and be used for a new hose, I don't know, as opposed to coming to us. And we, you know, we've got a bigger budget, we've got the ability to be more flexible than they do. So that's just me helping a quick pro quo here, is my position. So I am against the motion as it stands.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, based on the conversations I've had and indications from each other, I'd like to withdraw their motion.
Which one?
The motion is on the table, considering.
Earth Kelly.
Well, you made, there's two.
No, I don't.
But you made the first one, so.
There's one motion.
There's only one, because.
No, there's two.
No, I didn't allow the first motion.
We took it off.
Okay.
But for clarity.
We'll take it off again.
Read to us what your first motion is.
First motion is to waive Custer County Government Agency fees. That's the motion Bill made.
You specifically took it off the table, I remember.
Yeah, and he, he said to waive the fees. The chair did not allow that motion, because it was ambiguous.
And then he restated it.
Then Jay then made the motion.
I knew the maker of the motion. Put it on the agenda. He put it on the.
Chair didn't allow the first motion. Or ambiguity. Commissioner Prince made another motion that I believe we're in debate of right now. Do you agree with that?
Did he just?
No.
Did he just withdraw?
Hasn't been withdrawn yet.
I'll withdraw mine.
That's okay. If you're going to do a way, I'll just, I'll do, you're the chairman, I'll do whatever.
No, that doesn't how it works.
Oh, it is how it works.
Robert Roosevelt gives him the right to disallow ambiguous motion, and that's what he did. He handled it exactly correctly.
So, so I'll lay it out, that if, and I'm not saying it is or isn't happening, but just so we understand the process, you have asked to withdraw your motion. If the second concurs, I'll withdraw it. If the second doesn't concur, then we will vote on whether or not to withdraw your motion. But I believe you seconded your motion. If you want to withdraw your second.
I withdraw it in a heartbeat.
Then we will withdraw that motion. And thank you. I, I believe I have a feel for what your intent was, because.
Well, just three of us, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah. I just, I almost was going to defer to counsel about policies. I guess we can just sit here and make a policy. We don't have to have a resolution.
Resolutions or policies, I mean, if you want to do it formally, if you wanted to clear a policy, it's to have this board wants to operate, not try to regulate future boards. I guess you can just decide this will be our policy as this board.
Yeah, it's a moot point now, but that was my thought process early on. So. I guess probably the pointed issue here, it's not on the agenda, but obviously the, it's kind of gone down to do what's the group's pleasure concerning Jackie's request to waive the permits for the fire department.
So does that require a motion, or are we just going to do it by consensus?
No, that would require a motion.
So Jackie, you have a question?
It's two fees that I requested.
That's true. And we allowed the second one, correct? At our last meeting. We approved the vacation of the.
It died.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
What was it?
Do you have a record of that, Kelly?
For a lot line vacation.
And I thought we approved that, but.
You know what day we did that?
I thought we did, too.
The day of the dead.
That would be, hold on just a second.
The last meeting.
It was the Tuesday after we came back from a holiday.
September the 4th.
So it was the first meeting, July 4th?
No.
Labor.
Yeah.
September the 4th. It's the only time we've discussed it.
Even though she was on the third one?
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. That's right. It wasn't during, it wasn't the first commission meeting. First afternoon, correct, Jackie? You gave yours on a Tuesday.
Yes, because Monday was a holiday. So it was Tuesday afternoon. I was the last one on the agenda. I took an hour and five minutes.
Sixty.
And I had a huge smile on my face when I left.
You were never coming back again.
That's what I said, never coming back here again.
I thought you said you were never going to talk to us again, too, but maybe I just read that.
All right.
Yeah, it was September the 3rd, Kelly.
Yeah, there was no motion made or.
Right.
Yeah.
Let's do it again, and that way we know we have it.
You did vote, you did vote on the permit fees, and it was unanimously no.
Yeah, on the lot line vacation.
On the lot line vacation, that's what you voted on.
Would you read that, please?
I voted no, because I wanted to clarify.
So it was a motion by Mr. Candace, I can move by Mr. Prince, to waive Wetmore and Vacation Fees. Motion failed.
That's right, because we were going to go look at the whole picture. Anyway, so what do we do? I really believe she came to us with a question. Let's answer her question. And I believe we ought to waive the fees, both of them. That's my suggestion to get it started. Get it?
Chair will take a question.
How many taxing agencies would this apply to?
I think four or five. Library, school, clinic, fire district.
But, but some of those are in the towns.
It'll affect.
Doesn't matter where they are, they're taxing districts.
One, the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District. That's the only one they would affect, if they build outside of the town. The others are in the towns.
That's right.
Well, the question was, how many are there? That's what we're trying to answer. Doesn't matter where they're at.
This would affect. If they're building in the town, they go to the towns for their permits.
I want to keep it specific to the question, and it was with the fire department in a station that's outside the town.
If the library district wanted to build a satellite library in the county.
Be the same thing.
We're in the same boat.
It would be another request.
But the question was, how many tax districts were there? And I, I know there's four, but we could be missing one.
The school, the hospital, the water.
Oh, Round Mountain.
That's right.
Fire.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, we could what if it all day long. Round Mountain could certainly come and ask for a.
Build a house.
A waiver of a permit for a structure for their water system. But, so, what is the group's pleasure?
Excuse me, can I, can I say something else? So I need either two motions or one large motion. I would like you to waive the $50 fee for the lot line vacation that died last time, and the zoning permit fee for their building.
That's what I said, and there they go. If I can put it in a motion.
Well, you would need to do that, yes.
Okay, then I move. We accept Jackie's request to waive both the building permit fee and the lot line vacation.
Okay. I would change the wording to zoning.
Zoning, right, whatever.
Not a building permit fee.
It's a building permit.
It's a zoning permit.
Well, you call it zoning permit.
Yeah, I've never understood the difference between the two, but Jackie always tells me it's a zoning permit. We don't do building permits. Is there a second?
What is the motion?
The motion is to waive the zoning permit fee and the lot line vacation fee.
For the fire.
For the fire department. For the fire district.
I'll second it.
Then move to a second, that we waive the zoning permit fee and the lot line vacation fee for the fire district discussion.
It's not a policy that would.
No.
Just doing a single, one time. And it has been done before.
1982, 1990.
Differently, if I may, please. Have we ever, to your knowledge, ever assessed the fee?
No.
This would be a break from tradition.
Tradition.
Yes, if we voted to charge them.
Yes.
Further discussion?
Nope.
Public comment? Hearing done, we proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, nay?
Good dirty luck telling you, the audience, not to comment. Sorry.
Okay.
I'd love for a five minute break.
By consent.
We're not going to.
We'll be in recess for five minutes. Come back to order. Next item on the agenda is discussion of the ride away fees for broadband. I believe Commissioner Canada requests this to be on the agenda. Would you like to take the lead?
Ride away fees. Oh, yes. Yeah, we need to bring this up, because we have an opportunity even now, potentially using our ride away to put in a lot of miles of fiber. The town of Westcliff and the town of Silver Cliff are charging, I think, 64 cents a foot, currently, for the right to go down their alleys. But you know that better than I do. And I think we're, we need to be doing the same thing. I know in the past, we haven't been charging fees, certain things, road through the, ride aways, and we should be. So that's the gist of what we need to discuss here. And I believe we can still make it effective for what they're doing now. That's what I was told.
Well, I did a little research. We are charging CenturyLink currently 30 cents a foot for their broadband installation.
In the county, the whole county?
Yeah. And $100 for any boring, under the road, under a driveway, anytime they have to bore.
Was that something that has been set up sometime?
They have a standing fee. I can see if that's.
Previous boards or somebody?
On that.
Okay. All right, so then maybe the issue is, is that enough? Inflation has occurred.
I can't find it. I'm still in September the 3rd.
And if that's the case, when do they pay it? Do they make payment?
Roger told me they collect over $100,000 to this point in their fees for the year.
Is that going to be $100?
So that's a road and bridge.
It doesn't say when this was adopted, but subgrade prep, $100 a foot, and boring is $100.
Yeah, I'm glad you found that.
A flat $100?
Yes, for the first 200 feet, and it's 30 cents a foot after that.
What do you mean? It's 30 cents a foot through a driveway or whatever?
Well, it's $100 to bore unless it goes over, unless it borrows over 200. And then they add a 30 cents a foot charge to that. So I looked at those contracts early on with CenturyLink's subcontractors. I was specifically looking at the locations. I wasn't looking at the fee structure, but I spoke with Roger, and he said, yes, they are being charged.
Well, that's good to know.
Should that go to road and bridge budget?
That's the question I had. And the other question is, is it enough?
Yeah, I, we certainly can have that conversation. I don't have a feel for it myself, but.
I don't either, because towns, I understand, you know, 64 cents a foot, and you're doing alleys that are hundreds of feet miles.
Right, and they're disrupting.
People.
A lot heavier used traffic than a ride away along a county road, I would assume.
I understand, maybe.
But I'm not sure they're comparable circumstances. And I'm guessing if road and bridge feels like that's enough, then I guess I would feel like it's enough. I don't know.
Well, I don't know either. That's the point, is it, is it a road and bridge only thing to worry about? Because we don't, other ride aways aren't necessarily road and bridge, like across. Go ahead.
I'm really glad this was on here, because I think we needed to bring it out in the open that we are getting reimbursed. It would be paid for a ride away. I agree with Chairman Flower that there's a big difference between going down an alleyway behind a building or a home than just running down the side of a highway. I'm satisfied with what we're doing, as long as we're getting paid. Whether the money goes to road and bridge or elsewhere, I mean, it's, it's still coming to the county. I'm, I'm fine with the way it sits right now, unless someone feels it's something inappropriate going on.
I can certainly do a little more research with Donna, but my understanding was that it went to road and bridge.
That's what I heard, too.
So what's the contract we have essentially? Is it always going to be the same? Is it a constant contract?
Well, we don't, I need to be careful what I say, because I may not be accurate. I don't believe we have a contract with CenturyLink. We've contracted with their four subcontractors. So, as far as this ride away fees goes, now, I'm sure that Road and Bridge has a contract with AT&amp;T to allow that whole fiber installation project to occur. They subbed it all out. AT&amp;T's not doing it, neither, so.
Well, I don't know, I don't know enough about it either.
Yes.
Is there a map of where all they're laying? I mean, have they worked that out with the county?
They have.
And where would that map be?
There is not a map. Each of those subcontractors has a.
Sector.
Map.
Is that filed with the county?
It is, well, with Road and Bridge, yes. Yeah. And those maps, I looked at them briefly, show obviously the location of the entire burial project, and then they had a symbolism for, is it a bore under a driveway, is it a bore under the road? The ones I looked at, I remember seeing three different directional changes, where they actually had to bore under the county road, because they ran into solid granite.
If a citizen wanted to find out.
Road and Bridge, Gary Hyde. And specifically Roger Squire.
If their road was going to be included. You know, if they were going to get fiber, that would be who to talk to.
Yes, sure would. And Roger Squire was the lead on that whole project. Really, Gary and him worked together, but Roger was kind of in charge of that. Anything else? We good there?
Yeah, we're comfortable with that. That's all, I wanted to make sure.
But I appreciate you putting it on there, because I think we needed to bring it to the forefront. So thanks.
Okay, we'll move on. Request for a workshop with search and rescue board of directors. I brought this up again yesterday at the CBS meeting, only because Pat Fury was at the same meeting, and we talked about it. I should have reached out to Cindy Howard this morning or last night, I failed to do so. There was, it was a general conversation of, hey, we'd like to meet with commissioners and talk about search and rescue. I don't remember it being specifically about the budget, although they did have some budget concerns, but that wasn't directed towards.
So the workshop, the general conversation?
Just a general conversation about this, what we're doing here, who involved, these are things that we think we're going to run into in the future, that kind of thing. Yes.
I hate to be this foggy on this, but could you tell me where search and rescue falls? Is this under Office of Emergency Management? Is it a standalone group?
Yeah.
I'm very confused of the organization.
As was I. And so.
We are called out by the sheriff's department.
But it's under the offices of the sheriff's department.
Yes.
Is it a standalone?
Correct.
It's a.
It's a volunteer nonprofit organization.
Reporting to the sheriff. It's not under OEM. It's just, it's on organization, and the sheriff says, we have a mission, or we have an.
They are the ones that have the authority to call us out. We cannot do it on our own. It has to go through the sheriff's office.
Thank you. I just, I've never really understood.
Yeah, that's a great point. They're not a county entity as we know it, as commissioners.
So why do they want to talk to us, then, to clarify?
Well, I think eventually.
Somebody's got to be the boss.
Somebody's got to be the boss, that's right. I think budget, some of it's going to have to do with budgetary items, financing, and that kind of thing. But I think this is why, because I'm not sure, I agree with Greg. Sorry. Sorry. I agree with Jay initially. I didn't understand how the whole flow worked either, and so it was just a, it was the outcome of a conversation at that board of directors meeting. I don't know if we want to pick a date, and I'll shoot that to them and see if they still want to, and if the date works with them, or... I just told them I would bring that up. I know you're going to be out of town this next week, sir, as am I. Scary thought that Commissioner Candace is going to happen.
I'm in charge! I'm like, who was that president?
I remember a speaker of the House trying to...
Yeah, who was that?
Al Hay.
Al Hay, yeah.
Well, I was thinking, no, well, not. I'm out of the country. I was thinking maybe like the 1st of October, we're in town because we have a BOCC meeting.
Let's do it then, because I'm leaving town right after that meeting.
Okay, let's...
Well, I hope not after that meeting, because we got one on the 2nd.
Well, the, those two meetings. I always look at the first two days.
Okay, well, what do we do after the 1st, then? On the 1st, after... You want to make like one?
Yeah, let's do 2 o'clock, and I'll just, I'll ask them if, say, no, it's not going to work, then we'll just show it.
It'll work their volunteer out there.
The board meets at the first Wednesday of the month. I want to just do it at the board meeting.
That'd be on the 3rd, first Wednesday of the month.
At 4:00, 4:30, depending on...
I'd like to keep it off of that day.
Yeah, I've got to be in Denver by 6 o'clock that night, so I don't know. I'll shoot them the 1st and see what they think.
Any time?
2 o'clock.
2 o'clock, okay. And if that doesn't work? Yeah. It's good. If you had this on your calendar, you'd have it...
I wish I had it. I sure wish I had.
You should. It's the BOCC calendar.
No, he's got another one. I have one, too. He's got some people. I'm going to put it on BOCC calendar.
Okay, we good there, gentlemen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on. Consideration of deed from West Cliff for the county parking area that is owned by the town of West Cliff. Would you take the lead on that, sir?
This is a West Cliff piece of property. It's a West Cliff alley where all the employees park. The two issues with it is, of course, behind the courthouse and then behind the private residence, we deal with those separately. So what the West Cliff suggested is one of two things. Either they start charging a bunch of money to park there, or they give it to you. That was a joke. They didn't really say that.
That's...
The question was, does this really make sense for the county to own that spot behind the courthouse? I went ahead and I prepared a quick claim deed to move that property from the town of West Cliff to the county. I sent it to Clint for his review. Clint, I have a different format, but I think the wording was okay.
Yeah.
His is fine. So we'll get the job done?
Yeah, so I use a little different format than he uses, but I have it prepared, ready to be filed. It's signed by Mayor Winkie, and it's been notarized. So if the pleasure is that we own that property, I'll give it to Kelly, and she can file it. I went to JD to get the legal description for it. He was certainly, he said, this should have been done many, many years ago. So that's what stands.
So the motion is, I move we take possession of that piece of ground just east of the courthouse.
Probably except the quick claim deed.
Quick claim.
East heads up?
Well...
Parking lot in both areas?
It goes both sides.
Just to the edge of the county's property. It's not included with residents.
That's correct. This is not included. We're going to do, the town of West Cliff will do something separately with the private ownership. This is just for the county.
Right.
Question on that.
Makes sense, because it joins the justice center around as well.
Yeah. That was a motion, sir?
Yes.
And is there a second?
I wonder if I ought to recuse myself since I was part of the discussion with West Cliff. So maybe I should...
You certainly would have every right to second a motion, whether you're going to recuse yourself or not, but I will second the motion, no problem. It's been moved and seconded to accept a quick claim deed offered by the town of West Cliff for the alleyway in block 40, beginning at the north line of lots 1 and 28, and continuing to the south line of lots 10 and 19, which really means it goes from the street on the north side of the courthouse down to the south end of the parking lot, that's south of the courthouse. Discussion? I have a couple, sir, items I want to bring up, and I hate to do this, but I think we need to be correct. We have not seen this, right? You did not forward this to us? Okay. We've got some clerical errors. I'll show them to you. Bill hadn't even looked at it yet, but it's JD Henrich.
Yeah, and that was quoted out today.
So I think we probably better clean that up and get...
At least it's not on the signed...
We don't sign this, right? I mean, we really...
You just accepted, and it's filed.
So that was...
And I will, if I spell JD's name incorrectly, a council vote contention had already been signed, so I thought you'd look at it before. If you approve, you'll have a re-signed property.
Okay. I think that's the only thing I... So, and I'm going on his legal description. I'm assuming the south end of lots...
It's correct. I did it with...
It doesn't go to the street. It just goes to the south end of the...
It's just the alleyway.
I know it's the alleyway, but it could go past this.
The dirt road and the scale is not part of it. You already, the county already has it.
Already has it.
But we already have that. I don't know who we are.
And that is actually not a platted street, east of the scale. That's just county property that would have to use for a road.
As the direction. But it is on the county.
Yes.
The county has to make a continuous all the way to us.
There's no S on his name, period. I just want to make sure, Dave, when he corrects the Henrich, it's, there's no S on it either.
It's just Henrich.
Henrich.
Yeah, no, it's... I told him to think chicken well, you can hear on that. Henrich.
Yeah.
Rich eggs!
So here's what I did, okay? Since I never make mistakes, I intentionally put it in to see if...
To see if anybody else is doing it.
Yes.
Bring it back.
Of course. I'll bring it back. If you approve it, I'm just going to have it sent back.
Right, it's just a piece.
It'll be identical to that with the name Henrich.
Further discussion? Public comment? I appreciate you doing the work. Absolutely no brainer, in my opinion. And eventually, we're going to have to resurface that, the street portion of that, and it wouldn't be up to us, it would be up to the town of West Cliff. They own the whole thing. I think it certainly, smart business. Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of accepting the quick claim deed from the town of West Cliff for the aforementioned property, say aye.
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 I think I would like to...
Don't hand this myself. I just feel more comfortable. Just say present, Dave.
All right. Motion passes. Two votes in favor, one vote, or one member recusing themselves in the vote. Thank you again. Super perfect. Consideration of awarding a bid on the 1988 Peterbilt truck. I asked to put this on the agenda. Obviously, you gentlemen were aware, we have two bids for that vehicle. They came out the same amount of money. We went back to both parties and asked them if they were interested in increasing their bid. One said yes, the other said no. We have another bid here from the individual that was willing to up his bid from $3,500 to $3,600. It was not a sealed bid in this circumstance, because it wasn't competitive. The other person dropped out. So we have a bid here of $3,600 for the 1988 Peterbilt, and I would move that we accept that.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to accept a bid of $3,600 for the 1988 Peterbilt. Discussion? There was a little confusion on this. I know, I just want to bring it up again today to make sure we're all on the same page. Attorney Smith, apparently, I would have never dreamt this, but when we received the initial sealed bids, there were checks at the bottom of the envelope for those amounts.
We never had.
Yes. That's why I called you. They called me and asked, and I said, I don't think so, but let me just check with counsel. I would never have expected a check to accompany a bid. That's, I'm sure you didn't either, or you would...
Sure.
So here's the situation as it stands.
Got two donations.
They have retrieved those checks, because they ended up in Kelly's office, and so they rewrote two of the checks, I believe. The one check was meant different, bid altogether, so it was deposited. But then the, this check...
There was three checks, because they bid on three things, and so they rewrote the checks on the two that they were awarded last time, and then Sherry...
Has another check for the correct amount. She told me that yesterday. So we do have the money pending the outcome of this vote. So the check thing, I think, has been cleared up. Is that right? Yeah.
Yeah, she came to me and said, I need those checks, and I said, what?
I know. So Clint, do you need this new bid, or shall we give it to Keller?
All right, go ahead and give it to her.
Okay. Any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All in favor of awarding Mountain Valley Excavating the bid on the 1988 Peterbilt for $3,600, say aye.
Aye.
Close name? Kara. Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for following. I both of you, because Kara got caught up in the backwash on that as well. So next item of business, consideration of letter of support from the tourism board. Commissioner Prince, would you like to take the lead?
The tourism board has an opportunity to be awarded a grant.
$15,000. $15,000.
$15,000. There is some action funds in it that the tourism board will be budgeting money for, so there won't be any money from the county. Part of this is a letter of...
Commitment.
Commitment. I called it support. That was my error, a do maker. So I felt that we have done this many times in the past. It will help the tourism board obtain this grant. And would you like us, is it okay for me to call on the chair of the tourism board to tell us how you would use it?
Dave, before you do that, so it's the same thing we've always done with these grants, is getting the county to back it, to say it's something the county supports, basically.
We support.
In order to get told, to say it's a county thing, it's not a private citizen doing it.
The county approves the tourism board of using, of going after this without any commitment from the county itself. What would the money be used for?
So it is the CTO Tourism Development Grant, which will be a full-scale branding and message development project for the entire county. And we do realize that Custer County has attempted several logos developed at different times by and for different entities, and we feel that none of them capture Custer County in a way that would appeal to potential visitors. Our overall goal for this branding project is to develop a unique brand that is easily identifiable in and out of state, a brand with a consistent message, and something that will last us for a long time to encourage visitors to come to Custer County, give them a wonderful experience, to keep them here longer, and get them excited to come back and tell their friends to visit as well.
So can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Will the county have an opportunity to approve or disapprove of whatever branding and logoing that the tourism board is going to do, or is it going to be an autonomous project?
You know, I think based on past experience, that it would be best to be partners on it. We are working with Vista Works, the company that we, you know, do have, are familiar with them. So we are relying a lot on Brian's expertise, but we will be hiring a reputable firm that specializes in tourism to help identify and develop our brand. But I certainly don't want to have any negativity with the brand, so it is something that I think we would try to come together on.
Okay, so where I'm sure that you would have maybe the public's input before something was approved?
Yes.
Because we've tried this before.
Yes.
There were some areas that were very much in favor, some opposed, and I fully understand that. And so there'd be an open dialogue with the county and the commissioners before something is just approved. Here's the new logo, it's not something...
Right, as well as with West Cliff and Silver Cliff, we understand that the Custer County Strategic Plan of Tourism plays a big role in it. The West Cliff Strategic Plan Tourism is playing a big role with them, so we're all in this together.
I'll go ahead and move that we authorize our signatures to a letter of commitment from the tourism board to obtain this grant, with the caveat that no final decisions will be made until it is presented to the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
And just so you know, this is a 2020 project. We have to apply for the grant by September 25th. I think we are notified in October whether we get it or not, but it's a 2020 project, and our commitment is $3,750.
Right. Yeah, I looked up the deadline. I thought it was the 27th, but I may have missed, wrote that date down.
It may be the 27th, but I'm leaving town on the 24th.
Beg my indulgence, sir, would you restate your motion, please?
Yes. I move that the county sign a letter of commitment to the tourism board to assist them in obtaining this grant, and any county-wide logo or other branding be approved by the commissioners before it's adopted.
I'll second the motion. It's moved and seconded to sign a letter of commitment on supporting the Custer County Tourism Board in their quest to apply for a $15,000 grant from Colorado Tourism Office that would carry a 25% match, and that the county would be part and parcel to the outcome of that branding logo work. Discussion?
We would have the approval or not?
That was his motion, actually, yes.
Do we understand exactly what, it's not just about buying a brand, is it? What specifically is the grant doing?
So, let's see, let's see. It's more than just the logo.
Right.
It is, you know, like what makes us so special, and we also realize that while our night sky may be unparalleled, that daytime offerings are hard to surpass as well, and that we need a consistent brand and message to tie it all together. So from what I've understood from Brian is that there would be a selection of logos, not just one like, this is it. We would have a few to choose from.
Do you anticipate the bulk of this money being paid to Vista Works?
Well, it seems the way it works with CTO, from what I can tell, because we have applied for the Arts and Antiques Grant with Florence, and we were awarded that, and then we're waiting to hear about the Dark Sky Grant, which is a collaborative grant with about five other counties. And from what I can tell from looking at the CTO outline, a lot of the money actually goes back to CTO. So I find it interesting that they award you money... So I find it interesting that they award you money, but then you're going to give it back through them, but Vista Works is our expertise on how to work with CTO. So Vista Works does have some skin in the game.
I'm assuming some of this money will be paid to them for their work, was what I was getting at.
Yes, well, yes.
Okay. So gentlemen, I believe you have a copy of the letter I drafted in your board packet, I will read that with your permission, because we're still in debate of your motion. I would offer this up. Custer County Board of County Commissioners supports the efforts of the Custer County Tourism Board in pursuing a tourism development grant from your office. I'm sorry, this was addressed to Elizabeth O'Rear, the Senior Grant Program Manager, Colorado Tourism Office, pertaining to the tourism development grant. We understand that this is a 25% match program for a maximum grant of $15,000, and we support the tourism board's commitment of a grant match of up to $3,750 if they are awarded the grant. We also understand the development grant is not intended for marketing and website development, but for the purposes of supporting projects that contribute to the development of tourism industry statewide. We are confident that the local tourism board's activities pertaining to this grant will benefit the entire state or region. That last paragraph, most of that language came out of their grant development information.
It's a good letter.
That's a very fine letter.
Thank you. So with that, sir, I would move to amend your motion and to say that we would sign this particular letter. And I only bring that to the board in this fashion because of Deb's request to kind of expedite this. Rather than now go home and try to do all this, I just drafted this right out of hand.
Yeah, and I do apologize for the last minute thing, but because we've been applying for so many grants, this particular one fell through the cracks, and then it was thrown on my lap on Sunday.
But I have a comment to make.
Further discussion?
Yeah, let me make a question.
Well, let's back up.
You could change that, do that first.
No, I moved to amend, I did not get a second.
I'll second.
The movement is seconded to amend the motion to include this letter. We will deal with the amendment, then we will deal with your motion as it was amended, sir.
Can I just, my motion not originally say consideration of a letter, but he has the specific letter.
I'm talking about this letter, we'll sign it today.
We've reviewed this letter and we're okay initially, it's fine, it's okay.
The semantics, it's fine. We're getting accomplished what I wanted to accomplish on my campaign.
Let Kelly catch up.
All in favor of the amendment, which is signing the letter dated September 18th as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Any further debate on the motion of signing a letter to support the tourism's efforts?
I have just a comment to make, for the record, to clarify it. Jay made a statement that we would like, and Debbie echoed it, we want to partner with the tourism board. It's more than that, they're obligated to have us approve it, because they actually do work for us.
That is part of the motion.
And so, so I know you made that, but I wanted to make it clear on the record, because Debbie really tried it, but she said, well, we want to partner. It's in fact a requirement, is my point, and she was right to be bringing it to us for our approval, because anything that has Custer County on it that we're signing up to, unless it's a private thing like Custer County Realty, it's their right to use their logos however they want, if it involves the county and it's a logo, then we have to approve that, because we represent the people. Anyway, that's the only point that I made.
But you do understand that it is a tourism logo?
Right.
Okay.
Right, but it represents the county.
Yes, yes.
And it's our name that's on it.
Yeah, we're not replacing the county's logo.
That's right.
Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor of the motion of signing this letter to support tourism's request for a $15,000 grant, I'm assuming that's the maximum, I'm assuming that's...
That is what we're pursuing, yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
So will that be the letter that I can take today?
Yes.
Wonderful.
I didn't, well, yes it is. We all have copies of it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, well, we're signing that, we will move on then. According to my records, that covers the new business. Gentlemen, do you have anything else to bring before the board this time? Nor do I. Commissioner Canada?
No.
Chair, would you maintain the motion to adjourn?
Why would we adjourn?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Hold the comments. Yes, sir.
Make a statement, it's already 7:30.
I know.
Oh, shoot, let's keep going.
Anything else for the good of the order? Guys, all right down here? Coffee's at 2:00 in the afternoon? I've been chastised by your local sheriff.
He's not.
I know, and I've heard about that.
Coffee when?
Was there a second to the motion to adjourn?
Today?
Every day.
Oh, that's right, every day.
The movement is seconded to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay?